Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, June 14th. Called the meeting to order at 6:51. And I would ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss nine matters. So we have 2.1 Personnel Matter probationary teachers, 2.2 Legal Matter individual students, 2.3 Personnel Matter individual employee, 2.4 Personnel Matter individual employee, 2.5 Contract Matter individual employee, 2.6 Contract Matter individual employee, 2.7 Board of Education matter board officers, 2.8 Contract Matter individual employee, and then lastly, 2.9 Legal Matter individual student.
Someone?
A second? All in favor? Okay, we will be back. Good to see you here tonight. Why don't we stand for the questions? Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Foundation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Well, it's great to see everyone. And this is a festive and positive night, so we look forward to getting to the heart of the agenda. Before we do, we have some business that we'll go through briskly. First, starting with whether or not there are any comments from the public tonight on any item not on tonight's agenda. Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? And there were, there were two revisions to it. We added two executive session items. Actually, well, let's add two executive session items. 2.8 Contract Matter individual employee, 2.9 Legal Matter individual student. So with those two revisions, can I get a motion to adopt?
Someone?
A second?
Second.
And all in favor? Okay, and then a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. 6.1 Personnel, 7.1 Consent Agenda for Special Services, and then 8.1 Consent Agenda for Business. And then there is also going, well, let me get a motion for that.
Someone?
A second? Before we vote, there's, we are going to pull item 8.4 from the Business Agenda. So with that one change to the consent, all in favor? All right, sounds good. Well, thank you for bearing with us to do the business of the board. We actually, there were a fair number of Personnel Items, Special Services, and Business tonight that we all read in advance and just approved. And that gets us more quickly to the Special Report. So first, we're going to start with Item 9.1, which is Teacher Recognition Awards. And it's always a highlight of the year to talk about these awards. And the son of a kindergarten teacher, anytime we can celebrate teachers is a good thing for me. So this is definitely a night where we celebrate the work of teachers. And as everyone knows, the district's had a long tradition of selecting a teacher from each building to recognize. And there, it's really a great tradition. Last year was super special because every teacher was selected, given everybody's work through COVID. It was a well-deserved gesture of how much we all viewed your amazing efforts all last year. But this year, we go back to choosing a person from each building. And what strikes me is that when we listen to the descriptions of those that have been selected in the past, not only have they clearly, you know, gone above and beyond to impact the students of the community, but they also impact their colleagues and really get to the heart of what Byron Hills is all about. And as they have that impact on their colleagues, not only do they have an impact on the students that they have in their classroom directly, but really on the entire school building and the entire community. So it's outstanding, it's outstanding tradition. And then the other special part of it is entrusting those individuals, you know, with a stipend to then go back and invest in a professional, professional way, whether it's for continuing education or supplies or whatever it is, to their choosing, but giving them the flexibility to do that. And then, secondly, which I think is one of my favorite parts, when you come back in the fall, not that we want to think about the fall right now, this is what I think about the summer. But when we come back from the summer and it's this, you know, this tradition of them giving speeches and really just doing an amazing job at getting us all ready and in the right mindset to do what we all want to do, which is to educate kids in this community and give them the best experience we possibly can. So with that, as a backup, I turn it over to our Stevens Superintendent.
And I'm so happy to speak about our teacher recognition recipients tonight. I have been in Byron Hills since 1990. And I know that I was one of Dr. Pardalee's favorite people. And I never got the Teacher Recognition Award. And I always wondered, well, like, what, what is that special thing that someone has that one of his favorites doesn't possess? And I know through years of working here what that very special quality is. Scott talked about it, about being able to work with your colleagues. But it's also about being an incredible learner and being someone who has the fortitude in a high-achieving school district like this to quote-unquote "play," right? To go out there and say, "I want to try this. I want to look at this. I want to explore. I want to examine." And to not think about the fact that it is going to decrease your credibility or the way your colleagues feel about you. If anything, it is someone who's brave enough to go out there and say, "I think I might be able to make a difference." And what I've seen in our teacher recognition candidates is people who are willing to go down a road very deeply, learn a lot, and say, "But that's not what we need at Byron." And to back out of that lane and to go down another lane to find out what's right for you, your colleagues, and our kids. And that takes a very special type of person. And I didn't learn that until I was much older than all of you. So I understand where this recognition comes from. And it is a principal's choice to pick the teacher recognition, but it, it comes after a lot of painstaking effort. I talk to principals about how they feel about different people in their building and why they think that this one individual person is really the person that they want to highlight for this year to your colleagues. It's to show colleagues, take a chance, because look what I've learned and look what it's done for our organization. So I want to thank you for being brave, because it's very easy to go in day in and day out and do things that you feel comfortable doing because they've been tried and true measures for you for decades perhaps. It's another thing entirely to go in there and do something new. So we have four Teacher Recognition Award nominations this year. I'm going to read three of them right now because one is not here yet, and she should be arriving any moment. But I will start with Coman Hill. And I see Emily Sabatella in the back of the room, and I see Mr. Anthony Sabatella. I hope that, that better be you, right behind you, her with his arms around her. This is, this is kind of like an adorable Byron Hills thing, right, Emily? Don't, don't worry, Anthony. You can lean forward again. We know you love her. So Karen Eldin really wanted to celebrate you this year, Emily. And I think we've all been in your classroom and we've all seen the work that you've done with students. But Karen said specifically that this year, Coman Hill would like to recognize Emily Sabatella. Mrs. Sabatella is our K2 music teacher and a vibrant part of our school community. She is a member of our social-emotional learning committee and has been actively involved in reinforcing our school-wide initiative to embrace character traits that promote a kind, caring community. This year, the SEL Committee selected gratitude, respect, empathy, honesty, cooperation, and kindness from the Character Strong Program. The Committee also selected definitions and quotes to make these words meaningful for our young students. On her own, Mrs. Sabatella created a song to go with each trait. In it, as we focused on one trait, students started their music class by singing the song to reinforce its meaning. In addition, she created colorful slides with the song lyrics, which were projected on the hallway monitors. Lastly, she assumed a major role in planning our Kindness Day Assembly. She created a slideshow for the program, which was spectacular, collaborated with our PE teachers, she even got Rob Beeden to dance, I saw. And for the student dance performance, and coordinated with the Technology Department to plan for the sound equipment. Mrs. Sabatella is extremely detail-oriented and always considers what's best for our students. She's dedicated to her work and seeks opportunities to integrate music into Coman Hill to bring our initiative to life. For these reasons, we are pleased to recommend her for our Teacher Recognition Award for 2021-22. Congratulations, Emily. And Karen, for your nice words. I see Karen there. And Emily, you will also be receiving $1,000 to either pursue professional development or to do something with the work in your classrooms. So congratulations. And now to Wampus. We have our Wampus Teacher Recognition Award, Suzanne Milano. Where are you, Suzanne? There you are, right on the end. Suzanne, who does everything. Byron Hills Education Foundation, currently a teacher at Wampus, but next year is moving to Coman Hill. Just person of all trades. Suzanne, this was written by Peggy McInerney. I see Dave here. Thank you, Dave, for coming. Suzanne Milano is being recommended for the 2021-22 Wampus Teacher of the Year Award. Suzanne has become part of the fabric of Wampus since being hired as a teacher over 15 years ago. She is a true advocate for children, a true collaborator with colleagues, and most importantly, dedicated to Byron Hills. Suzanne is committed to every child being successful, academically and socially emotionally. When you enter her room, you always feel community. It does not simply happen. She devotes 100% effort all of the time to foster in this community. The net result of this time and effort is the assurance that everyone feels a true membership of the mini Milano community. In fact, year after year, students from past years come to visit Ms. Milano to rekindle fond memories from their time as mini Milanos. While holding all children to the highest expectations, Suzanne lets the children know that she believes in them and they can do it. In response, they often put forth effort to go the extra mile, even when learning is difficult. The reason for this is because of Suzanne's love and devotion to them. Being devoted at Byron means going the extra mile for students and putting their needs at the forefront of every decision. An example of this includes the important role Suzanne plays as an active teacher member of the Byron Hills Education Foundation. Suzanne's been instrumental in supporting grants, including the K5 Environmental Enrichment Grant, the Wampus Creative Arts Space, and the Coman Hill Outdoor Patio. She has proven she is a beacon for any member of the Byron Hills community. And she also helps me a lot with the BHA. Suzanne is one of the reasons that Wampus is a great place for our children. A school of excellence must have a palpable positive culture. The culture of Wampus can be felt by any visitor who enters the building. As a dedicated member of the community, Suzanne's worked tirelessly to build school community that values doing what is best for children, teaching the students to care for others, and being a team player. Wampus is where it is today because of teachers like Suzanne. Suzanne represents the dedicated, caring, and courageous teachers who have built a great school community through their tireless deliberation and commitment to children. And I would say that that dedicated, caring, and courageous group of teachers who have built that school community are all sitting next to you right now, right? Congratulations, Suzanne. And thank you to Peggy for her words. I am going to hold on Kate Smith. And once she comes in, we're going to pretend that we didn't do this without her and we're going to sort of... Just kidding, she knows we're waiting for her. And Byron Hills High School. I see that we have Stephanie Greenwald in the back of the auditorium. And Chris Walsh is recommending Stephanie Greenwald this year for Byron Hills High School. She began her career in Byron as a part-time science teacher in 2003. Initially, she was an integral part of the creation of our Science, Technology, and Society elective with her colleague, Ken Kaplan. Collaboratively, they designed the course to explore, investigate, and research areas of science that interested students with daily life. The elective course soon became one of the most popular science courses at the high school for students of all learning profiles. Stephanie's background in school leadership and as a curriculum writer for Science 21, not to mention her years as a camp director, gave her a unique insight and skill set into learning and teaching. Stephanie quickly developed a reputation for her student-centered approach to science education and was asked to become part of the Authentic Science Research Program. Her excellent rapport with students, her passion for science, and insane work ethic, yes, I've seen it even late into the night, became legendary within the program. Modeling collaboration, innovation, and continuous improvement, she beclaim, became the clear choice to become the coordinator of the Authentic Science Research Program in 2017. Stephanie's leadership of the program has taken it to new heights. Where the goal used to be a submission to Regeneron, the focus has now turned the holistic development of science inquiry and discovery and the unlimited possibilities that science offers. Graduates of the program speak about the influence that Stephanie has had on their lives. Beyond the research, her impact resonates for students long after they submit to Regeneron. She seeks ways to inspire our students to discover their passions, and her stewardship of the program has made it an exemplar that so many schools aspire to emulate. Stephanie is also a founding member of the Challenge Success Steering Committee, as well as the Principal's Advisory Committee. Byron Hills High School is proud to nominate Stephanie Greenwald for this year's Teacher Recognition Award. Congratulations, Stephanie. Fantastic. They couldn't hear me whispering. Okay. Yes, ready? Okay, so at this time, we just plant in a hub. At this time, we are going to be talking about our Teacher Longevity Recipients tonight, who are here. And we are going to move this down to the stage where we are going to be calling both the Teacher Recognition Recipients up and our Longevity Recipients up. And I would just like to say, in looking at this Teacher Longevity list, this list includes 775 years of dedication to education. Now, if all of our longevity recipients were one human being, you would have been born in the year 1247. That is a very long time to dedicate yourself to your students, your profession, your colleagues, and this Byron Hills community. And I love nothing more than telling people who come to interview at Byron Hills that when people come here, they don't leave, because it is a great place to work and a great place to learn. So I have been here with all of you for this time in your lives. And I have to say that when I look at the time that you have spent in this district, working together, and I see the groups of people who have come here together to support each other. I have my whole Crittenen crew in here that's mostly in the 30-year category with, with me, pretty much. And I have my Wampus group, some of whom are retiring and others who are not. But this is a dedication to each other and to this school community that I think is, cannot be found in other districts. And it is not just that Byron Hills is a great place. That's not why you stay. You stay because you make it a great place. And for that, I want to thank you and congratulate you on your longevity of either 30 years, 25 years, or 20 years tonight. And in one moment, we are going to come down and call the names. But first, I saw my friend Kate Smith sneak in. Kate, we went through our other three Teacher Recognition Recipients tonight, and I encourage you to go back to the tape to hear what Scott said and what I have said about getting recognized as a teacher in Byron Hills. I want to read what your principal, Kim Lappel, wrote. And Kim is here tonight. Thanks, Kim, for joining us, because it really was her pleasure to recognize you for the Teacher Recognition Award. Kim says, as Winston Churchill once said, "The pessimist sees difficulty in every opportunity. The optimist sees opportunity in every difficulty." Mrs. Smith is an eternal optimist whose strength, innovation, and passion for both her students and her craft allowed music to remain in our students' lives at HCC despite the challenges of these past two years. The pandemic required that music be experienced differently than in the past. Mrs. Smith did just that with determination. She found ways to teach chorus when students were not permitted to sing in school. She kept her students engaged and modeled flexibility and perseverance for her colleagues. Mrs. Smith's commitment to her students is evident through all of the activities she leads in and out of the music program at HCC. Every student at HCC studies music with Mrs. Smith, be it in sixth-grade general music, choir, or eighth-grade exploring music. Mrs. Smith's dedication and commitment toward her own professional development has led her to expand the musical offerings and create more opportunities for students to shine. She plays a pivotal role in expanding the exploring music course work for eighth-grade students. That was that great class that we went and attended with the board. She has led the charge for the HCC musical production year after year, taking on numerous roles, including director, assistant director, music director, ticket sales, whatever needs to be done. She's led student performances in downtown Armont, played with the high school band for Homecoming, orchestrated the HCC variety show, and helped organize the community concert. When do you sleep? That was mine. She spent countless hours outside of the school day preparing students for participation in the annual NISMA Chorus Festival. This year, Byron Hills hosted a large NISMA festival, and Mrs. Smith, once again, was there volunteering her time to ensure a positive musical experience for nearly 700 musicians who participated. Mrs. Smith's dedication goes beyond her work with students. She sought to be a solutionary, serving on the scheduling committee to create new ways to develop a more robust music program. She's volunteered to serve on numerous interview committees and continued to invest in her department's growth by guiding and mentoring new music teachers. She's collaborated with her director in shaping the music department by sharing best practices, reimagining curriculum, and pivoting to the ever-changing pandemic-related safety protocols. Finally, Mrs. Smith has been instrumental in uniting and fostering the HCC community throughout the years, but her efforts were especially poignant these past two. She led the faculty in the creation of both the teacher feature and other videos which celebrated our community, made us all smile, and brought joy to our lives. Mrs. Smith is a gifted educator and a musician whose love for music, love for students, and her colleagues has enriched the entire HD Crittenen learning community. Congratulations, Kate. And now, we will go down and call the Teacher Recipient and Longevity Recipients up. And we'll get a sense of where those 775 years came from.
We figured we would walk instead of having all of them.
You have it, right? All right. Hey, Gina, what are they supposed to do?
All right, you're going to come up and receive your gift from Jen, certificate from Scott, a handshake from Tim, or a hug, or a fist bump.
Or an elbow.
Or an elbow. All right, so let's start. You want to start with our Teacher Recognition?
Yes.
So if we could have the four Teacher Recognition Recipients. Emily, Kate, Stephanie.
Would you like to sing us a little song? You all have to hold your things the same way. Make sure they're raised. Yeah, something like that.
Straight up and down. Ready? One, two, three. Cheese. One, two, three.
Yes, we can get another picture outside when we're done with this, with Lisa. All right, so we're going to start with our 20-year longevity recipients. First up is Amy Cohen at Wampus.
You know I'm such a hugger. This is killing me. If you're willing, I'm willing.
Mary Beth Devery at Coman Hill.
Where did it come from?
All right, for the four Teacher Recipients, I didn't have a...
Luisa Granero of Byron Hills High School. Willaby Lebec at Wampus Elementary. Heidi Marcucini at Wampus Elementary. Maria Montalbano of Byron Hills High School.
Maria comes to every single Byron Hills event for our kids. I just have to leave that out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then we write to each other and we'll talk about our favorite parts. Appreciate you, Monty.
Lisa Palmer, Wampus Elementary School. Joy Reynolds, Byron Hills High School. Yes. Megan Salamone of Byron Hills High School.
Congrats, Sally.
Rika Singh, Coman Hill Elementary. Danielle Wu of Wampus Elementary. And Robin Zili at Coman Hill. All right, we're going to move on to our 25-year longevity recipients.
This is a huge graduating class. Yeah. Well, last one, would you like to stay standing? Or would you like to sit?
Would you?
Really? All right, stay up.
Oh, yeah, this is fun.
Yeah, it's fun.
Joanna Bergelson, 25 years, HCC president. Beth Capua, Wampus Elementary. Jean Cave, Transportation.
Jean, we've known each other since we were little kids.
Diana Maselli, Coleman Hill. Okay, that is it for 25 years.
And now, the big supper.
The big three O's. All right, so for 30 years, first up is Deb DiFrancesco. Amy Pastner, Wampus.
She asked me to name, she could not retire, and I said, yeah. Don't test.
Kim Supon, District Board. Sheila Seenan, HCC. Mary Stout, HCC. All right, and last one is Lily Van Zant.
And here they are.
All right, one, two, three.
If we could just ask all our recipients to head into the hallway to take a picture, that would be great.
Welcome back, everyone. So now, we're gonna go on with our business for tonight. And next, we go to item 10.1, Special Report to School Security. Clearly, there's not a topic that's more important, so thank you for coming. And to Gina.
Hi, everyone. So I'm just gonna start by introducing our guests, and then I'll talk, and then pass it back to Brian and Marty. So on our right over here, we have Marty Costa, who is our security manager at Byron Hills, who also works for Altaris, and then Brian Shanahan, who is our consultant for Altaris. Just to give a backdrop in terms of what we do here in terms of school safety and security, we have historically and continue to do have multiple structures in place for school security and safety, both at the district level and at the building level. At the district level, we have our district safety team who reviews our annual safety plan that is on our website and available for the public. Of course, a lot of that information in terms of protocols and practices and so forth is very general. It's purposeful in that sense to not give any specifics related to our building emergency plans and how we respond to various emergencies. At the, we also have the district emergency response team, which is comprised of multiple stakeholders, administrators, staff members, a parent, a nurse, our fire department, our police department. That meets quite often throughout the year and really discusses any emergency annexes that we need to refresh ourselves on, that we need to improve upon, that perhaps something is going on in the news or another event that has taken place, and we need to get together to review our plan and our practice to ensure that we are doing what we need to do. At the building level, every school building has their own building emergency response plan, response team that's facilitated by the assistant principal. On those teams, there's teachers, staff, custodial support, student resource officer, our security manager. Again, you get the idea that our teams are made up of multiple stakeholders, purposely. The building emergency response teams meet throughout the year, and also, they are required at each of the level, each of the buildings to practice a certain amount of evacuation drills and lockdown drills annually. Also, in addition to those structures, we obviously have a relationship with North Castle Police Department. We have not one, but two SROs at this point, who are our partners in our daily, day-to-day operations, and also serve as very valuable members on both the building and the district level teams. During the 2018-2019 school year, we did partner with Altaris Consulting Group, who are experts in emergency response management as well as security. And at that time, when we first contracted with them, we were using them as consultants. They were able to come into our district and complete an assessment on our school buildings in terms of safety and security. During the 2019-2020 school year, we then contracted with them for a security manager. At that time, our first security manager was Dan Carpe, who stayed on for a couple of years, year and a half about, and now Marty Costa has been with us since September. So I want to pass it over to them to kind of give you an overview of what Altaris does, like in terms of overarching, what their role is, what their work is with the district, and then also to Marty to hear what he is doing on a day-to-day basis, and just know that in terms of communication and partnership, this is ongoing in terms of our communication. Just to give you an example, the other day, I was able to join a webinar that was facilitated by Altaris regarding the Rob Elementary School situation in Texas, and just learn from them in terms of what had, what they had learned from that experience, and also reminding us what we need to do in terms of our own school safety. Altaris has multiple clients or school districts that they work with throughout this area in West Chester, as well as Long Island and Orange and Putnam County. So I will pass it over to both of you.
So yes, good evening, thank you for having us. Again, my name is Brian Shanahan, the senior vice president for Altaris. First, I'd like to say this is a really nice ceremony that you had before. It's a pleasure to actually work with your buildings and your principals, because there's real buy-in when we talk about safety and security. And it's really great to be working with each of the teams. As Gina referred, we have building-level emergency teams comprised of a good cross-section of each building, including administration, mental health, teachers, custodial nurse. And working together, doing training sessions at least twice a year with each team, help us to bring the, I like to use the term like moving the ball down the field, making sure everybody's confident, comfortable to know what we would do and how we would handle certain emergencies. That's part of that training process and table topping. Part of our goal is not just to enhance the safety and security of schools, but to help you with the tools moving forward to be prepared for any emergency. And we see all of the horrific events that have happened this year alone and in years past. We learn from them, unfortunately. We currently work with over 50 school districts throughout New York State, private and public, 300 schools in New York State, New Jersey, Connecticut, Louisiana. We have a group of about 26 employees where we, about 19 of them now, or just like Marty will speak to you in a moment about your specifics for your district, but 19 coordinators that work in school districts. That being said, we gather a lot of information and intelligence, basically, from what is happening. What's the trends that are occurring in different schools and the areas? And how can we effectively, you know, train on those and be prepared for those? And looking at a lot of the things that we have done, both on a district level and the building levels, that helps when we talk about drills, when we're preparing for those kind of situations. And everything that's really important to understand is that a lot of questions can come up after a major incident. Like, what are we doing? Where are the kids going? How are we handling lockdowns? Gina referred to it before, the district-level plan is a public-facing document. It kind of gives you a general overview that everyone can see in your community. The things that we can't necessarily answer specifics to are in a confidential document, that being the building-level emergency response plan, which usually run about 100 to 140 pages. And it gets into many specifics, Plan A, Plan B, potentially Plan Cs and contingencies when we dealing with any of these emergencies. So, and those are very confidential documents that are not open to the public. So that's why I think it's important to understand that we respond, we prepare, we drill. I think that brings a level to each of the school buildings as to appropriate response without building anxiety. I think that's an important piece when we talk about the mental health aspect of things. Part of what we're working towards with this year, and we all know that we had kind of the pause during COVID. We had open doors, open windows, we had to have all of modified drills. Hopefully, we're moving that needle and we can get back to non-modified drills, staying in compliance with exactly what New York State's expectations are for us when we dealing with any type of plans, drills, and procedures and things along those lines. But one of the things that we're working towards as well, amongst all the other things, and Marty will talk specific to your district, is some infrastructural and procedural things that are happening. One of the things we're working with on a district level is the parent reunification process as well. Really making sure, God forbid we ever had a major event, that we have good parent reunification process in place to put, you know, our children's hands back in the hands of their parents in the light of any type of precautions. Let me head off to Marty, then we'll take any questions.
Good evening, my name is Martin Costa, about 30 years' old enforcement experience, 20 years as a school resource officer and a dare instructor. Recently retired to take this opportunity to work with Altaris in your district. This year specifically, as Brian mentions, and generally, things we covered. The access door system, new security system for the doors of this building. The other system was older technology, which took longer to process accounts and facilitate each door's use per user. Now simultaneously, we can provide an account or restrict someone's account by web-based format rather quickly, which makes it easier to prevent someone's access if someone loses an ID, or if we need to expand someone's access to different buildings. We can do that faster. This improved technology will help in the future when you update other security systems or alarm systems. It'll be more compatible. Another focus right now is on building numbering and door numbering. If you come into this building, you'll see there are bright red reflective numbers for each door. I want to make that consistent with all the windows of this building and all the doors and windows of the other buildings, so that they're all the same. Basically, that is for the purpose of someone inside a building not familiar, they can explain to an emergency responder where they are, and from the exterior, that emergency responder can find someone quickly. As part of the building response team, we did different presentations, as Brian mentioned, throughout the year, mostly on drills, bomb threats, lockdowns, and evacuations. Regarding the parent evacuation, parent reunification, I'd be, I'm responsible for the go-kits for buildings, a district-wide response kit. So if there is a need for evacuation to a different building, it helps the teachers, administrators reunite the kids and parents quicker. I'm also in charge of monitoring the camera surveillance system. This year, we've had upgrades or additions to multiple school buildings. I work with the school resource officers, Donnie and Steve, on a regular basis, contact them daily about current events, about things in specific building or needs for assistance from North Castle Police or bigger events. The biggest part of the shot is really security and staffing. We have four, have a security guard each building, staffing for specific day during school events, but also the bigger events, graduations that are coming up, all the APO days, and that's been the majority of staffing with our security company.
Such as senior night happening.
Happening as we speak.
Should we ask questions?
Sure.
Thank you for coming. I've been waiting to meet you guys.
Pleasure.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yes.
Thank you.
One question I have is, obviously, hard, hard security measures are very important. We have awesome building security, SROs are our partners. Another way to think about security, though, is that we literally have, you know, more than 2,000 students. We have hundreds and hundreds of employees, and then we have parents, guardians that are seeing things. And so one of the things that I think about is, how do we, you know, best harness the power of that to ensure that without creating over-anxiety, that everybody is vigilant? So that if you do see something that doesn't look right, that you know how and when and where to report any sort of best practices that you've seen around that? And I'm sure an element of it is probably the training. Absolutely, and you kind of hit it with the empowerment piece. And that's one thing that I have seen in this district, as many districts throughout our county and throughout the state. Sometimes it's challenging to, for liability purposes, sometimes as teacher or staff member may think, do I have the empowerment, am I allowed to call a lockdown, am I allowed to initiate an emergency protocol? It's one of the things that we continually train on. I've seen that as an improvement, it's been here, and I would give credit to the superintendent, Gina, from the top down, we want that encouragement, that we want our staff members to feel confident, should I need to put a building into a lockdown, or have a reaction of a protocol being initiated? I think one step before that, and not encompassing, you know, not adding to the anxiety, I think one step that we have to make sure that we, the buy-in from the community, parents, and students, is even before we even have to initiate a protocol, is the preventative measures. And we've seen it over and over again on News 12 and all the major 24-hour news networks. Every day, there's some other social media threat, or some other threat that's out there, even from as young as the things we're dealing with today, from a third grader. I think that's another big piece that we need. Not here. Yes, let me be clear, thank you, not here, another district, you know, not in this district, but, you know, even as young as that we're dealing with throughout the area. I think a big piece is threat assessment. I think we need to, you know, continue to encourage folks, students, and staff, and parents, should they see something, to report it. The quicker we know about something, the quicker we can get the resources necessary for a student. So rather than dealing with any type of aftermath, we're dealing with all of those preventative measures. And that's another big piece to all of this. And I think as we see some of the things that come out of news and things that happen out of these major events, that's a big key piece that could have been a preventative measure. So I think that in part with the training brings, brings the whole picture together for that safety aspect. And do you have a process at your firm where, because you see a lot, you're in multiple states, probably, you know, number of schools is very significant, that when you, when you notice best practices, or when, God forbid, something happens, and then obviously, you learn from every incident that happens, spread that to us and to the other districts you're working with? Absolutely, so Gina had mentioned the webinars that we will conduct, and we do regional seminars. I myself, again, Marty gave you a little bit of his background, I'm retired from law enforcement, I've been doing this work with Altaris for 14 years, I kind of was wearing two hats, working during the day and evening as a police officer, but I was a school resource officer as well. So we have a big network of not only our employees throughout the region. In New York, we work with schools from Buffalo through the Hudson Valley and all over to Long Island. So all the information gathering from a lot of different agencies that we're kind of plugged into, both law enforcement, emergency management, and schools. All that information that gets gathered, we want to make sure that whatever we're producing back out to folks like yourselves is factual. As you know, there's a lot of things, and the unfortunate, I don't want to harp on it, but the unfortunate events that happened in Texas, there was a lot of misinformation that came out at first. We have to learn from the facts as to what do we have in place already? And it's almost a bit of confidence to say, hey, you know what, in Byron, we're already doing that. In Byron, we're doing this. And those are the things for any type of improvement opportunities that we may find, or reminders when it comes to training. And I think that's, again, another piece. COVID took a lot out of us when it came to safety, so it's coming back to moving that needle back from the district level down to each of the buildings. I'm pretty confident that, working with a lot of the teams, and Marty being here today every day, we're there. I guess just a final question, and I ask this, I preface it with, if there's anything that's not appropriate for a public session, then by all means, we can talk about it in another forum. But I just asked the question of, in your relationship with our district, have you had an operation that, that you like, and when you look at our overall protocols, you know, are you satisfied that we are doing, you know, everything in our power to keep our students, faculty, staff safe? Yes, I would definitely say, without getting any specifics that you do here, there's a lot of contingency plans. We're constantly looking at updating the building-level plans, and we are in 100% complete compliance with everything that the update expectations are for New York State Education Department. Great. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, I don't think Mike can see us, can you, Mike? That's great.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was enjoying it.
That's so.
I'm kidding.
That's one a year.
Yeah, right? It's the end of the year.
Singer at the end.
One in September, one in June.
Two a year.
Good evening.
Hey, Renaldo. Do you want to get out of the shade?
Hello again.
Hello.
Hello again. Hello again. Okay. Thanks for allowing me to be with you this evening to present the 2021-22 report on interscholastic athletics. I am excited to present this to you, and, um, I'll get right to it, okay? I hope I know what I'm doing with this. Okay. I first need to thank Dr. Kalkinecker for helping me with the presentation and the format, and I hope I followed the instructions correctly that he gave me. So for, for this school year, we offer 21 sports, that's consistent through grades seven through 12, along with 57 interscholastic athletic teams, seven through 12, over the three seasons, and that's separate from four intermural sports that we offer at different levels. The, the, the most participation that we had in inter, intermural sports was our field hockey sessions that we ran at the, at the Bubble for students in grades three through eight, and I think we had 49 students sign up for that, and we're excited where that is going. And you'll, you'll see that, a little bit of that on the next slide. So here's our, a listing of our merge teams that we offered this school year. The first was a varsity field hockey merge program with Briar Cliff High School. The second was boy swimming with Westlake, Briar Cliff, Pleasantville, and Valhalla. And a wrestling program we worked, we merged with Westlake, Valhalla, and Briar Cliff. And girls golf, we merged with Fox Lane High School, and for co-ed skiing, we merged with Briar Cliff. So you, you may have heard me say this before, but the merge program, a merged interscholastic athletic program provides an awesome opportunity for some athletes who might not get the opportunity to play at the high school level in, in competitive, in a competitive environment within a league, a structure, and within a Section 1 full tournament environment. So, for example, with, with field hockey, we had the merger this year, which is a two-school merger, we realized through some surveys and meeting with students and meeting with parents, that this year, we will have enough participation to have our own team this fall, and we're, we're looking forward to that, and with our coach being in the building, we're looking for, for big things there with, with the field hockey program. And the, so that program will not, as I mentioned, won't be a merge program, but the other, the other programs will remain. One program that we initiated this year is a unified basketball program. So with, so with the unified basketball program, that's a collaborative effort between the Section 1 interscholastic athletic office, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, and New York Special Olympics. And we, we could not be happier with the result of the program and where this program can go, from, you know, the, the experience that the, the students had watching everybody interact in the main gymnasium, we had two home games, two away games, one game we had standing room only in the gym, it was just electric, and we're just so proud of the program and so proud of the coaches for, for everything that they brought to the program. And becoming a unified champion school means so much more than just expanding the interscholastic athletic program and increasing opportunities for students to just compete in sports. It's a commitment to providing an inclusive school community for future generations of students and their families, as well as teachers and administrators. In taking this important step, we joined over 230 school districts in New York State where students are experiencing the many benefits of playing unified sports. So we're looking for great things to, to come in the program in the years to come, and expanding the season next year as well, and moving up from four games in the league. We're one, right now, we're in one of 15 school districts in Section 1 that offer the unified program. One picture there was the, the packed gymnasium, which was a lot of fun. There we go. Okay, it worked. And, you know, a list of, of some of our accomplishments that, that we're proud of, our sportsmanship recognition, you know, that is something that we, we will always hold on to, no matter what, what the stakes are. So, so we are extremely proud of Byram Hills and how our athletes represent themselves, and how they represent their, their, their families and their school district and their community. Our league and section champions, you know, we, we've had that, we've had, we've had that success at that level this year. Regional championships, we've had two, one for the boys tennis team and one for the girls tennis team this year. We've had a significant number of all-league, all-league recipients honors and honorable mention, and all-section honor and honorable mention as well, and we have four records, four school records set this year, three in baseball and, and one in wrestling. Lot, lot, lot of fun watching the, the records go down and seeing the, you know, the hands go up, that, that's a lot of fun. And of course, our state championship, that I, I think I mentioned, but our state championship in, in the fall with the girls tennis program. Thank you. Scholarship, it's so, at the forefront of, forefront of all the programs that we have, it's, it's what we do, it's where, where we're, we're a scholastic program. And the New York State Scholar-Athlete Program recognized 14 of our varsity teams for, for their program, and we're, we're proud of that, where 75% of the roster for that particular team has a 90 GPA or better in, in that category for a scholastic team. And the Golden Dozen Football Award, the Diamond Nine Excellence in Baseball, and the Academic All-American, these programs recognize the athletes first and foremost for their sportsmanship, their academic achievements, their, their success on the athletic field, and, and their leadership qualities. And so we're, we're proud of these programs that we're affiliated with, and one program that we, we, we go after every week in, in varsity sports, it's the Con Edison Scholar-Athlete of the Week Award, it's a Westchester County program where every week, a number of athletic directors get together and vote for the athletes who have been nominated by their, by their district. And I am extremely fortunate to be on the panel for, for voting. Of course, when, when it's my day to vote, when, when I'm in the rotation, and we have an athlete on the table for not being nominated, I have to obviously step out of the, of the room, and I'm not allowed to, to vote, of course, but we are extremely proud that we have four recipients this year, and for a school of, of Byram Hill size to have four Scholar-Athlete weekly winners, it's impressive, it's the most we've ever had in one school year, is four recipients. We had one in the fall, two in the winter, and one in the spring. So this is, this here is a little bit, I want to talk about Byram Hill Strong. So the last couple of weeks, every opportunity I had to speak to somebody about the athletic program, I'm talking about Byram Hill Strong, and what we've been through, what the student athletes have endured, and, and how they continually display their inner strength and their commitment to each other, and their commitment to their program and to their families and to their school, and they really just, you know, they're proud to, to wear the shirts that say Byram Hill Strong, and they talk about it, it's fun to hear them talk about in their locker rooms and on the bus and on the field. So this, this slide here of Byram Hill Strong, it, it, this is one of my favorite slides to watch, I must have watched this, it's 18 seconds long, I must have watched it 40 times already, okay? So really what it is, that, you know, if I, if you haven't seen it, I'll very quickly describe the setting of this game, as I mentioned, an example of, of Byram Hill Strong. This was a Section 1 playoff game where we were, we were home playing the defending champion Clarkstown North. The game went into extra innings, and we were down three to two entering the bottom of the eighth inning, and Danny Bernstein came to the plate, and he led off with a base hit, so he's on first, and Jared Cohen comes up next, and, and he hits a ground ball to third base, and somehow, and I refer back to Byram Hill Strong, he beat the throw to first base by about a, a fraction of a second, because he was determined that this game, he was going to turn this game around. And then Bobby Jacoin comes to the plate, and Bobby Jacoin is the now, now the all-time home runs leader, tied for first in all home runs in, in Byram Hill's history, and Bobby comes to the plate, and, and both runners, Bobby hits a double, a long ball deep into center field, misses the, misses the fence by about a foot, and both runners score, and Jared is on the heels of, of Danny Bernstein, and, and that's how the game i- is won, and so I have to, I have to show this, and then I'll finish saying something about it. Let me get to see it. You hear the hit? Danny comes around third, here comes Jared, passes him. And then the place just goes crazy, right? So, so at this moment, at this, right, right when Bobby came to the plate, I was in the dugout, and I saw Brett Alcantara, our Assistant Athletic Director, take out his cell phone, and I said, Brett has a way of putting himself in the right place at the right time, so I turned to Harry and said, something as big is about to happen. And sure enough, it did, and when we, we took the video, we took the video, we put it on our Twitter feed so all of our fans could see it, right? Because we knew it would be a big hit, that this is how they won the playoff game in, in the bottom of the eighth, down three to two, in a comeback, and so later that day, later that day, Jared was attending the Golden Dozen Scholar-Athlete Awards Ceremony in Harrison, and they had seen the video, it got around, that, that he hit the, he hit the, he was on first base, and he made it home, and when they introduced him, they knew he was late, and they said, well, Jared, we know that you were on first base, and you hurried home because you had somewhere else to be tonight, and it was to get here. And, you know, how they celebrated Jared, and everybody at the event celebrated Jared for that, and really congratulated the team for that, just a sensational comeback, and once again, you know, just proud to talk about Byram Hill Strong. And our last, our last slide here, oh no, sorry, not our last slide, I'm sorry. So once again, Byram Hill Strong, a, a team that had a, had a vision, they wanted to make it, make it all the way, they wanted to win their last game of the season, that's, that's the coach's, you know, dream, that's every player's dream, is to finish on a win, right? That means you went the distance. They went the distance, okay? They won the league championship, the section championship, the regional championship, and they came in runners-up of the New York State Public High School Tournament. What an event, what a venue, what, what a, an effort, and just fighting to the, you know, to the finish, and playing their best, and giving their all in, in, in this event. Once again, an example of, of Byram Hill Strong, and we're just so proud of what this team accomplished all, all season long. And, you know, this here is the last slide, so that last, previous slide was on June 10th, and this slide ended the 2021-22 season on June 11th, where Ella Jaworski competed at the New York State Tournament, New York State Championships, sorry, in the 1500 meters, she's the Section 1 champion, and she, talk about Byram Hill Strong, she drove up and left at 4:30 in the morning to drive up to Syracuse to, to get ready for her event, she did it all, she competed, and she made us proud up there, there was a lot of tough competition, but, but she held her own, and she was there to compete, to represent Section 1, to represent Byram Hills, and, and represent her team, and I know that they were proud of her for this, and we're proud of her for that, so Ella has, you know, she's, has more to do, she's, she's not finished yet, but just some examples of Byram Hill Strong, just some examples of how the athletes have endured, and how I'm proud to stand here today to talk to you about this, and thank you for letting me present this to you. And now, if there's any questions, or anything?
Your enthusiasm is infectious.
Thank you.
It's been a great year.
Thank you. It's, it's easy for me to, to talk about this, especially here in, in this setting, because I know it's, it's close, extremely close to you, and, and, and close to many of you who have students or have had children, or have had children participating in, in the programs.
Rob, is it the right combination of teams that you think we have at this point as you head into next year, and are there any teams that are in jeopardy of not having enough students? Like I know, as an example, it's girls softball, a lot of graduating seniors, and no JV teams, so you don't have that, that natural pipeline, is that a team you think okay?
It's a great question. It's one, it's one of the teams on our radar for, for next year, that we are about to enter into conversations about that in, in the summertime, we have, we have it on our agenda for, for the softball program, because we just did graduate a lot of, a good number of players. So, you know, we're, we're hopeful that we can continue the, the, the numbers of teams and the, and the level of play that we're used to, and the, you know, not, not just the, not just the, the championships, but the lever, level of scholastic awards, right? Because we know that that's really the, the important part of it, so, but yes, to answer your question, that's, that's on our radar.
No other questions, Rob? You had an extraordinary year.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thanks for your service.
We did.
Thank you.
Ah, it was the best one we've ever had.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I brought some props, some props, some show and tell, I wanted to show you some really cool books, but the advanced photo class, they weren't available at the art show, but they're sculptural, and I'm going to sort them out on the tables, you can just check it out, but this is the advanced photo class from Jake Cronin, New York High School, and every student sort of picks a theme, and then they created like these awesome sort of books. of books. So I promised I would sort of display them. But I just wanted to share those and
Thank you.
sort of put them out, just to check them out. And having students sort of park with them temporarily was tough because they all want to see them. But every student sort of has their theme and their sort of piece, but they're just really interesting, but they actually sort of bind them together themselves and they're just awesome. And I saw like some of you were at the outdoor concerts, here's another prop that you might all love up here tonight, but but these are actually the programs for the outdoor concert series that we did. It was a full program.
They were a great success.
It's fun, so show them. I stand here, can you all see? I won't fall off the glass. You want me to stand? All right, I'll stand here. Feels weird, shoulder, but you're all good? All right, thank you for letting me be here tonight to talk a little bit about the fine arts. And what a great night to be here. First of all, I do know how to clear a room, but the but all kidding, what a great night because we've celebrated so many teachers' longevity. And I'm so proud that two of the four teachers this year for teacher of the year are music teachers. And, you know, I have to say, we we talked about last year, all of the teachers in the district being honored as teacher of the year because of what we lived through in the pandemic. And, you know, and and everyone had their struggles and, you know, we joked about it the last time I saw you because the music teacher, the chorus teacher that you talked about tonight who's teaching chorus where the kids can't sing, that's a that's a very different kind of struggle. And I think taking the opportunity now to say thank you to the principals for being patient with the music teachers and working with them to to slowly sort of bring back the music program that we all know and love here that they had built. And and it's been a really, really incredible ride. This year was so much better than last year and we have so much to celebrate. So I'm going to talk you through a few of the highlights from this year from the music and art programs and sort of by building and and as we go, if there's some things that you want to ask about, we can do that, we'll hook to Q and A at the end. Cool? All right, so we'll start off at Coman Hill. Here we go. So what I did was I collected quotes from all of our teachers in the department of twenty teachers and I asked them all, what are you most proud of? Because I came into Byron Hills where all the teachers felt like they were they have amazing spirits behind them, but they weren't able to show their best stuff because they weren't doing what they normally do. And it was a tough time. And and so as we're getting back on the horse and sort of rebuilding, this year I thought it was really important to say, we're not fully there yet, but what are you most proud of? What went the best? And and so what I've done is in the slideshow this evening, I've just put a whole bunch of quotes and you'll open and sort of read them, I'll point some of them out to you, but just things that really resonate with the teachers that they can look back and say, I'm really proud of this and and here's where I'm at. I can't read from here. Can I go here? I can't. Oh, all right, that works. I've created a much larger online presence of music for my students. It's been exciting to see how this can support my teaching and how enthusiastic students are about accessing these resources at home. That was a big deal. This is a teacher who our teacher of the year who said this because she sort of in the music room, sort of like anti technology, you want kids to be making music and and being in that moment and not behind a screen, but sort of embracing that out of necessity and now sort of carrying that through, finding places for that where it really, really lends itself well to student engagement has been amazing. And students being able to access those resources at home has been awesome. Kindness Day, I I know that some of you were at Kindness Day, it was really, it was the most special thing you've ever seen. We had K one and two out on the playground singing kindness with the top of their legs, with their hearts out. It was just, it was gorgeous. And you know, Miss Sabatella, who ran all these songs through all the character traits all year long and then to have entire student body and the parents, or not the parents, but the teachers out there with their classes, it was just really magical moment and a nice culminating event for the year, real community building. When we move on to Wampus, you'll see there's pictures of Peter Pan at the bottom, you'll see some classroom performances that we've had, you'll see some art instruction happening. Again, there's some technology pieces, teachers that have been teaching for twenty five years were honored this evening saying, wow, technology really does work well in my classroom. And you know what? And even though the pandemic is sort of almost behind us, there's a lot of things that I can continue to do regarding differentiation, for instance, where the students can continue to work independently and sort of choose their own project, so it's not every kid does the same project at the same time in the art classroom. The the major highlight, this was a recurring theme, the major highlight of the year is returning to live concerts. I think every music teacher wrote that, but the but it was pretty remarkable. Also at Wampus, earlier this month, we did this really fun trip out to Storm King. Have any of you been out to Storm King? It's the Sculpture Garden out in New Windsor. It is incredible, it's like four hundred acres of just these giant sculptures that are like four or five stories tall. And to go out there and I I said to Miss Constantine, the art teacher who organized this, I said, oh my gosh, I'd love to come along and see this. And then, you know, a couple of days later, it was like, people, you'd be a chaperone. So you'll see in this picture, these are my, this is my cohort this day and and I made them pose by every single sculpture for a picture, but the but it was really magical day, it was really, really fun for them. And the and this narrative here on the screen, Miss Constantine talked about, a lot of the fifth graders this year, she talked about sound art. And what does that mean? What is sound art? And it's really a sound file where the sound itself is the art, it's not so much the visual aspect. So the kids are taking this field trip to Storm King and the first question they said is, are there going to be sound art? Well, it's a sculpture garden, there's really, there's a bell on one of the exhibits, but that's it. And so what they did was they created their own sound art and one of the children with their iPhone, Apple Watch, rather, like recorded all the people walking on the gravel and the pebbles and created their own sound going from exhibit to from place to place. It was just awesome, the fact that they sort of did that like unprompted in their own way. So that's what that says, but it's magical and that really resonated with the teacher as that's a teachable moment. That's where the kids are going, wow, what I did in the classroom, I can make it apply into real life, which is authenticity, which is what we want in our classrooms. Cool, HCC. So this is the picture we're so proud of, but this is our outdoor concert, you'll see the orchestra, you'll see the St. Orange, and I just made sure I got the crowd in there so some of you might be in that picture in the background, but great fun. Something noteworthy on this slide that I'd point out is that the art teacher, one of the art teachers at the middle school really talked about the social emotional learning piece. And when we think about that student directed learning that they implemented for the seventh, eighth grade, so many students found themselves gravitating towards the art classroom and they worked on not only their art projects in the classroom that they were working on in class, but they were sort of creating their own projects. And, you know, the teacher remarked in her reflection on the year was, she saw so many friendships blossom into amazing, amazing things, which just speaks to the social emotional learning, it speaks to the fact that kids feel safe there and want to explore this together as friends. So that's a pretty remarkable piece. Oh, Moana Junior, they did Moana Junior at HCC, it was awesome. And the kids were so ecstatic and, you know, those productions that they do all throughout those younger grades, they you can move mountains with them because the entire student body just gets behind them. And you've got a production staff like a tortoise force driving this home and kids are making choices and they're they're making the costumes, they're working, like it's just an all around team effort. So proud, Kate sort of leads that charge often and she was teacher of the year this year, honored this evening. It was just all around a great, great effort. Another piece that I'll just sort of point out in this picture here, it's hard to tell, but Sunhee was a is a composer in the West Coast, she's also a police officer and detective and karate person and martial arts, like amazing history. But she's a very, very well established, well known composer and conductor. And through one of the grants this year through the foundation, Aaron Lockwood brought in this composer. And so the students performed both at the middle school and high school, works by this composer, they brought her in, we flew her in from California and she worked with the students and she talked about grit and she talked about how they're able to drive and was like, listen, don't worry about the technique, it's the feeling and storytelling behind the playing. It resonated so much with kids. The music that she writes is not like a boring piece, it's like a movie soundtrack. So the kids like ate it up and it was just really magical. So she's looks like she's about twelve, but she's in this picture here in the bottom, leading the group. On to the high school. So live concerts, live concerts, and under normal circumstances, it would not have like a big deal to say, here's the band, here's the chorus, here's the orchestra. But this year, here's the band, here's the orchestra, here's the chorus, live, on stage, in performance with audience, it was incredible. So we've had a lot of new teachers this year, we had a lot of untended staff and a lot of transition going on in the music department, never mind the safety pandemic and all those kind of things that were happening. So there's a lot to be proud of just in these three pictures alone. Students have risen to the occasion and really, really made made the program shine. I think I saw a lot of you at the art show, you'll see the top picture here, the art show, we actually hosted it, we can't host it in the Byram, whatever you call it, Bobcat Hall anymore because community lunch, but we transformed the band room, which is a very, very large space into an awesome art gallery and the teachers love it. And so you'll see, we took this little panoramic at the top, but huge turnout. And again, this was when we were just sort of starting, invite families back into the building. And when we did this, we literally, we like watched exactly how many people were in the room, two people went in, two people went out. It was insane, but everyone was so patient, they loved it, they hung out here in the theater until they were invited in. It was just an awesome night. And the students, when they put they put the entire assembly together, they hang all the artwork, they sort of curate which pieces are going in and it's just, it's a big collaborative effort, it's pretty magical. This little picture under the BH, I just want to point out, this is a, these are some of our core orchestra members. This evening, in Miss Lapples remarks about Miss Smith, she was talking about that, we hosted NISM this year and it actually wasn't seven hundred kids, it was eight hundred and seventy five kids. Eight hundred and seventy five kids we hosted here just as we were able to invite families back over a Friday and a Saturday. They haven't had a NISM festival, which is the New York State School Music Association. It's like an adjudication where every single student comes in and they prepare their work and they get adjudged by whatever, they get critique and written out. We had eight hundred and seventy five kids come in and they hadn't had a NISM festival in two years. So this was amazing, amazing accomplishment, a really nice way to sort of like jump back in and have Byron sort of lead the charge to say, we can make this work safely and ready. So the timing worked out beautifully, it was really magical. Then these were some of our volunteers, the students with the Triumph Honor Society group that sort of led that charge. And I'm running out of time too. So the so the question then becomes is what is next? And so when we think about what is next, where we go from here, we know it's going to be about continuing to build, we know that it's going to be about continuing to strengthen and grow our program. And so I sort of put down four bullet points, what I would say we can articulate is develop new ways to recruit and retain students and increase participation in arts courses. And I'm talking K through twelve, we're talking about how do you retain students in the instrumental program when they're going between buildings, we're talking about how do I encourage students to take more arts electives here at the high school? It's all of those things. We're looking about creating more authentic learning experiences like the trip to Storm King that I talked about, like the guest composer that came into the classrooms. Those authentic experiences really, really help propel student learning and that's what we're most excited about. We're looking at providing opportunities for families to participate in arts through hands-on workshops. There's a point to that, we want to be able to share that joy and engage them in that critical thinking that happens when you are making music or making art. And so we're hoping that we can sort of engage our families this way next year. And we're looking at expanding some opportunities to showcase student artwork in sort of other exhibits and performances, we're going to do the music in the parks next year with the high school program. So we're just looking at engaging other in other places for us to sort of showcase the talents of our kids. So I think that's that's it for the fine arts and then I have some things to talk about with sort of the media center. So I'm happy to sort of pause and talk fine arts for a moment, or if you want, I can continue and then we can do Q and A at the end. Preference?
Any questions about the fine arts?
All right, I'll give you think time. I'll go through some media centers. So the media center, should we come back?
Just one quick question, which is the band at the high school?
Yes.
Some of the dynamics where people during COVID stopped playing instruments, so there's this this reduction in number of people playing instruments. And when you look at the numbers, is it sustainable? And also the other question which kind of relates to it is just for those that can't take band or art in their schedule because they just simply don't have time, just any thoughts about like extracurricular, do we have the right level of extracurricular opportunities versus curricular opportunities for those kids?
Thank you. As far as extracurricular and curricular activities, we are, we're looking at increasing that. We have three music teachers here at the high school and they spend, two of them spend the morning here, one of them spends the afternoon here. So there will be more arts electives next year because we'll have the teacher, this year we had three teachers for two periods a day. This next year we'll have more periods, the teacher will be here more. So there'll be more electives. So for instance, we didn't offer guitar this year, but we'll be offering guitar again next year. So which is a matter of scheduling. As far as the numbers and what we're seeing in terms of participation, I think the biggest drop off in retention or the drop off when students leave the program is really that leap between buildings. It's hard in any district, it's harder and sort of maybe it was elevated here because of the pandemic. So I can tell you that there were only a handful of students, particularly in the younger levels, where this parent's boss said, listen, I'm not comfortable with my son or daughter playing the trumpet. And so there were exceptions that we made based on having adopters notes submitted, things like that, but but we really did take their, I think, the necessary precautions to make families feel comfortable and to make students feel safe. And and I think we've seen a good result of that. There are old students that are going to sort of choose something as they go through. As far as that healthy balance of curricular offerings and can they schedule it and can it work, you know, I mean, our salutatorian this year is in band, she's a senior tuba player and a rock star. You know, we've got students that are in cum laude and science research, and I think I showed you last time, Edith Bachman is a rock star, she was, she's in the presentation, I think you'll see shortly, and the and is our first chair flute player. So it's possible to do those things that I think we talked about Scott last time, that hurdle is that tenth grade health in the seven thirty slot, but after we get beyond that, it's very, very possible and it's about student choices. And so, you know, we continue to try to expand those offerings. I think about the band and the orchestra, right now at the high school, there is one ensemble for band, one ensemble for orchestra, one ensemble for chorus. It gives the students a more authentic experience because the balance of the instrumentation is better, so you've got a full instrumentation, if you will. Less kids is going to mean you may not have any clarinets in the band or things. So it's important that we do have one, but it does make scheduling a little bit more difficult. So so that's what, you know, so the compromise is we split into make it accessible, but then it becomes sort of like a combo, you're not able to do legitimate repertoire. So there's that balance. Right now, our numbers are, we're just over thirty some for each of the ensembles and so we've still got a nice representation. I think bringing back our music in the parks and some of the family workshops that we're talking about and some of the recruiting and retention efforts that we're going to be looking at exploring next year are going to help maintain that. All right, I'm going to jump ahead to sort of the media center. I have to tell you, you all know this because you work with Ryan quite a bit, but Brian Melso in the media center, leading the charge there is incredible and he is literally everywhere you, you'll be surprised when you turn around, he's like in every building. But he prepared a number of these slides and I kind of went through them and I wanted to share some of them with you today. Just in terms of media content, one hundred and ten thousand current views across our video platforms. Obviously, that's not just this year, but that's a culmination of tagging in terms of our Bobcat TV and our channel and all of our YouTube links. This year, one hundred and forty videos and live streams produced. That's, it sounds like a lot, but when I tell you the media center is comprised of Brian, Gabby, Lisa and Divine, and Divine works just sort of occasional hours when we're filming things. They are a very, very small team, they're accomplishing amazing things. There's some extracurricular club advising things that they do in terms of marketing, both Gabby and Brian both sort of take on extracurricular group, one at the middle school, one at the high school. And they've done lots of different things, they've got a student on Instagram, they've got a lot of stuff, our students are sort of driving the ship on that, or driving the car, I guess. And the and so that's something that they're both real proud of and it gives them that student interaction. There's our friend Edith Bachman. Creating the next, the leaders of the next generation is a big push right now for our district in our mission statement, but we're looking at the social media growth, one hundred and fifty percent follower growth across our social platforms. That's amazing, all the Google Analytics, Brian's able to run every single time we've got a video up or every single time we've got some posting, he's able to run exactly how many hits we got. We knew the night after the sixth grade concert this year that by the next day we had two hundred views, which is a nice representation, it's nice to say, wow, we couldn't do it live, but you know what? We can say with reasonable assurance, people saw it and we're really proud of that. So Brian being on top of the Google Analytics is amazing. Just photography alone, you know, Lisa was here taking pictures this evening, a hundred plus district photo sessions, like I said, they are everywhere. And so it's why we have so many great, like you look at these shots and these are on, some of these are on the website, but sometimes you have just such great candid moments. So it's not that they're just there, it's they're there, they have the talent and the eye to be able to capture those moments that are really magical and so it makes the district really, really shine. The website administration, so you'll see here, he's got a couple of different pics, but there's been a big push to make sure that the multimedia is really up the forefront of our website, so it doesn't become the stale sort of stagnant page, but that it's rich in content and multimedia interaction. And so you're looking here at the at the splash page for the virtual art show that we did K through five this year. So there's a lot of different pieces that they're running and and they're constantly building pages. The final piece is the writing, we brought on Lisa Flam this year, who's really, really helped carry a lot of that social media writing, but also the writing for the focus and the spectrum and all those types of things. So I think it's lifted some of the burden from the district office and the, but it's just been a really, really wonderful help to the to the media center in terms of them being able to churn out materials. I think that concludes that piece, it does. So are there any questions? And I don't know if I can answer them all to your satisfaction, but in terms of the media centers or anything that I might be able to answer for you in that way?
No, I just, I do have a comment.
No, I just, I do have a comment about the media center. They have done absolutely extraordinary work. And a number of years ago, we talked about the media center being parceled out to various different groups. And we decided to move that in-house and I couldn't be happier with it. And kudos to that whole crew, but Brian Melso is extraordinary.
He truly is.
He's done so much for this district and he has a, he knows every kid and a passion for everything that they're doing. He's at every event and just the ability for him, as you said, to capture these students in the act of learning and growing and celebrating and competing, he's been pretty masterful. So he's a lot of the brains behind everything that goes out into this world for our students. We appreciate him.
Thanks. Well, thank you, everybody. It's been a pleasure, so.
Thank you.
Why don't we just take literally two minutes, take a two-minute recess and then we'll come right back to policies. Two-minute recess. Ready? Yep, all set for policies. So we're going to 13.1.
Sure. So second read on policies, I believe there are the four. Public complaints, policy 1400. And then we have complaints about certain federally funded programs, 1405. Executive sessions, 2330. And code of ethics, 2160. And Jean and I went through those at the last board meeting, so this is a second read. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer those. And if not, then if you want to do a motion to approve those.
Sure, motion to approve those second reads, 1400, 1405, 2330 and 2160.
So, second?
All favor?
Great. I just want to do a brief end of year report and I want to thank Mia, Lara and Petri for your fine work on the policy committee this year. It was a lot of work. I did not expect we would do much and we ended up, these are the policies that we reviewed and revised this year and there were 22. And I think that's a record. I think like we always shoot for about a dozen or so. And we've been doing well and this year 22, I don't know how we got that many policies done. So it's a lot of work and I want to thank the policy committee. We also have legally required policies. These are policies that we must have in place. And we review these policies periodically and we also look at ones that are old and haven't been revised in a decade or so. We have, we've been keeping up with revising these regularly. There are a handful that we plan to look at this summer and some that are, haven't been looked at in a few years. So we want to give them a look this summer and into next year as well. But we're constantly maintaining those and we do have all the required policies in place. There are four, five policies, four policies and a regulation that are required for annual review. And these are in your packet. You can look at the full policies in your packet. They're required for public review every year. So at this meeting, I just want to bring these to your attention. The policy 1900, that's parent involvement. 5300, code of conduct. 6240, investment. 6700, purchasing. And the 6700 are purchasing regulation. I'll tell you that we are working with the principals on the code of conduct and reviewing that. And that's some work that I know Jean has been working with the principals this year. And we will be reviewing the policy this summer for the code of conduct and having some conversations with the policy committee next year on that one. At this time, are there any questions from the board on any of these policies that you would want to bring forward to the policy committee? And again, at any time, if you bring these issues forward on these, we will review your comments or feedback with the policy committee. And finally, just looking ahead, so Jean and I do a little bit of work over the summer and bring some things forward to the policy committee. And these are some things we're planning to look at. We do look for any change in state law, any change in state regulation, also reviewing any of our old policies. And those are policies that take priority. And then also throughout the year, there may be things that come up or changes in regulation and all that. We then bring those policies forward. But these are some that are on our list to review for the summer and bring forward to the policy committee next year. And a few of my favorite pictures from the K5 art show. So I thought I would end this line with that one. And that's all I have then for policy, some of my favorites.
Thank you to you and the committee, Jean and Jen, everybody that helped with the effort. Amazing year.
Sure. And I'll see the policy committee tomorrow at 8:30 a.m. to review what we just reviewed. Thank you.
Now we go to enrollment update.
Yes. So as we know, we have a pretty large kindergarten class coming in with now registered 189 students. That will be 10 sections. One thing that we, is important to note is our 12th grade class next year is that small group that is going through. One of the three that are in all of these years. So we have 158 seniors next year as opposed to our 197 that we have this year. So you'll see that, that dip in the high school in that one year only. But keeping in mind, we have over 200 students in 10th grade and 183 in 9th grade. So that's where we start to see those numbers building up. And then we do have that fourth and fifth grade, you'll see those 150 numbers again. But after third grade, when you go down to second, first kindergarten, you're looking at numbers, as I said, kindergarten 189, first grade 181, 178 and 182. So Coman Hill is going to be pretty full next year. It's nice to see those numbers back again and we just had a lot more kids registered. That's it for a moment. And now I'm on. Oh, it's Tim. I did put it here in case, because I don't really know if I can read that line anymore. This is, I'm sorry that Lara left because one of the co-presidents featured here and it's Ashley Stangle. And this is Byron Hills Gaga, which is Growth and Awareness Group for Alzheimer's. This club has really not only been impacting us in school, but outside of school also. So some amazing things that they did. Ashley Stangle organized a bake sale for the club. They got over $1,000 that they donated for Alzheimer's research, pretty amazing. And then Ashley and fellow co-president Remy Matza organized a trip to Bristol. And they got Valentina Marino to come with them. She's an amazing singer and she did a 45-minute set of songs from Frank Sinatra and Paul Anka. And it was supposedly just amazing. So thank you so much to that group and for reaching out to our community partners. And next, we have, there was the evening of the Hudson Valley Alzheimer's Association Championship banquet that was held at the Bristol in White Plains. And Emily Stangle was awarded Elite Grand Champion ribbon. And Remy Matza and Lily Hirsch were awarded the Grand Champion ribbons for their participation and fundraising efforts over the past year. And the club is really looking forward to participating this year in the walk to end Alzheimer's. And that's going to take place in October at Westchester Community College. So I hope everybody can join. It's pretty fantastic. Here we have Ella Jaborski. I know that we heard about her in our athletics presentation, but just pretty amazing. Her new personal record at the state championships. And that record was for the girls 1500 meters. And she ran a time of five minutes and two seconds and is now ranked the fifth fastest female in Byron history in the event. It's pretty amazing. And what a day it was for our varsity boys tennis at the Billie Jean King Center. It was pretty remarkable to watch them play. I am so proud of their sportsmanship. I'm proud of their determination, everything that they did to support one another and to display Byron pride. And while it was upsetting that they were not state champions for them, the fact that you are the second in the state is pretty extraordinary. We couldn't be more proud. And I know that they are also very proud of how far they came in their organization this year. It was a pleasure to be there with them and supporting them. And the boys team tennis championships. If you look at the division two, we had Byron Hills then against Wheatley. So this was sort of their path to get here, first beating Aurora. Just great things to say about them. And while our season is over, I say go Bobcats. And I owe that to Chris Walsh. I think it's probably the best, next to Byron Hills is a great place to learn. It's going to be one of the best things in Byron Hills history. So congratulations to all of our athletes, all of our artists, everybody that I've been featuring all year. And while this is our last Board of Education meeting of the year, I just want to extend thanks to our school community for everything that you did for our kids, teachers, staff, administrators in this district. We are in a much different position right now than we were in the beginning of the school year and really getting into a sense of normalcy for these kids. And we owe a lot of gratitude to our community for helping us do that. We have community partners that have been tremendous to us, the PTSA, who, who has been meeting without fail, has been supporting our teachers in our schools. Right now they're, they're doing the rallying to get school supplies for kids for September and everything that they're doing to make sure that our school runs smoothly. I want to thank you and our partners there. Also our education foundation, who had some pretty amazing grants this year. Next year, at the beginning of school, our Coman Hill kids will be able to go and use an outdoor patio for their classroom outdoor spaces. Just incredible. It's been one great grant after another entrepreneurship program at the high school. I mean, the list goes on and on, straight down to some Instagrams recently for movement breaks at the, both the elementary schools, furniture for fifth grade. I mean, the list goes on and on for the B H E F. And thank you so much to them for being such amazing partners to us as well. And I feel like this is like, this isn't the exit speech, but I sort of feel like it is. To my right, I want to thank our district office assistant superintendents for everything that they've done, not just this year, for all past years, in getting us to a point that we're so proud of. And the Board of Education, who by the way, remember they do this for free. And this is one thing that I said to many of their children that I happened to be with one night at one of our schools. I said, the amazing thing about your parents is they're not doing this just to like be at the top. They're doing this because they want to help every single child and that's as selfless as you can be. So as I end this year with my Byron Hills highlights, I end it by thanking our Board of Education. Because of you, we have a great school community. Thanks for your dedication to all of us and your support always. And that's it for me.
Yeah, I have a quick report I want to talk about the summer forward. I want to talk about the summer. So as our students are winding down and getting ready for summer vacation, my office is busy and is with Dr. Taylor and many of our administrators preparing for a very eventful summer with professional learning. The summer is busy here with teachers coming in to do various professional learning opportunities. So including our, our annual cyber camp, which is four days of learning and integrating technology. That continues today and that is probably about 25 years old, I think, our, our cyber camp. And that's been a tradition. So everyone's looking forward to that. Additionally, we offer a variety of workshops in the summer as well. I'm showing some of these. You don't have to read all the details, but a few highlights. Every once in a while, we offer this How to Learn Math for Teachers, which is really innovative mathematics workshop from one of my favorite math professors at Stanford University, Joe Bowler. Really great work. Transformational Leadership, which is about integrating leadership skills into the classroom. And we have some global competence workshops happening to integrate global competency throughout our curriculum. And several on executive function. We're offering some workshops to help teachers develop how to teach executive function in the classroom. And academic resilience. So there's a few more. We are offering, I think, eight this summer, eight workshops this summer specifically for teachers K-12 to take in addition to cyber camp. And then addition to about 100 workshops that are offered from our administrators. Each department and the elementary buildings offer and design workshops for teachers that are very specific to their content. So it could be updating curriculum maps, it could be revising curriculum. And it's a variety of initiatives that are generated by our chairs and directors and the principals at the elementary building. So it's a busy summer with that. And I want to show, also one more thing which we started doing last year, since we're now hiring more and more new elementary teachers for the first time. We are bringing our teachers in earlier. We used to bring them in in August for the first time for orientation. We are now designing, this is our second annual week, right after school's out. That first week in the summer, we ask the new teachers to come in and do curriculum training. So they train on our literacy curriculum, so they have a day where they're learning the Wonders curriculum. This is going to be led this year by our own reading specialists, Liza Devaney and Melanie Burksen. We had a consultant last year, but our teachers can lead that work as well. We're doing an overview of our math program and that will be done by a consultant, but followed by the next day with our own math specialist leading those workshops the following day. And then the teachers will work on our online social studies and ELA curriculum and look at the, the social studies framework. In addition, they have throughout the summer through our BOCs has offered the foundations training. That is our phonics and phonemic awareness program. So we ask the new teachers to take those courses. They're specific to grade levels, so they'll take those workshops. And then they come in in August. So it's a really busy beginning for our new teachers. They have a week, the first week of the summer and then the last week of their summer vacation is spent with us getting ready for the new school year. So we're looking forward to meeting them and having them here. It's going to be a very active summer for them. And one more thing I want to highlight briefly, we've talked a lot about global scholars this year and you heard from our global scholars folks and you heard them speak about the changemakers project. And Jen highlighted some of the recognition our students received through the changemaker project at the last board meeting. And I want to highlight something that we have the students do on our website. So keep building our global scholars website in. We, these are students who are in the year two of the program. And we wanted them to take the work that they've done this year as changemakers and sort of write their changemaker statement. What, how do they perceive themselves as a changemaker? And then sort of give a little bit of overview and background about what their action project was this year. We thought it was a good conclusion to the year as well as get them ready for next year. So when they come in in September into the year three program, they can look at where they left off and that can be their launching point. So just to highlight a few, wanted to show, here's Brooke. And I'll just read what she wrote here. She worked on Students Against Anti-Semitism. And she has an Instagram page, so they link to any resources that they created electronically. And her statement is, Brooke orchestrates change in her community on anti-Semitism through interactive lesson plans and worksheets shared with middle school and high school students to educate them on the issue. And then her dropdown here goes and gives a statement about her background, why she's interested in this, what led her motivation, what she's learned throughout the year. And then it ends with what she plans to do next year. Just another example of Luke. His is called the, the, I can't even say it, de-stigmatizers. Luke lessens the burdens on teenagers' mental health through hosting of an interactive field day. So he again describes what he has done with students where he's doing a field day to just give students a release, sort of using the, you know, kids needing some interaction and social interaction post-pandemic. I actually was in a classroom with him today as he had his last class. And he came up to his teacher afterwards and just said, this was just such a transformational year for me when I did this project. I didn't know how much this would mean to me and what I would learn. I thought I was just giving to the students, but I learned so much and I learned that I really like to work with kids. So that was really neat to hear him sort of reflect the year in that way. I'll point out just one more. This is, I think it's Izzy down here, let me find her. She did Rational Solutions. She has several links to things she's done. This is, Izzy mobilized a series of political campaigns to bolster the legitimacy of bills to lower insulin prices, thereby educating her community on the power of approachable forms of political advocacy. So again, you can see the spectrum of issues that these students are focused on in global scholars, but putting together this rich page where we can see what our students are doing and share it year after year with our students as we try to make changemakers. We know our, our students can be the, the agents of change in the future. And I think this course is helping them really articulate who they are as changemakers. So I'm really proud of what, what the teachers and what the students did this year to end that, that course. So I thought I would end with that. So thank you. We're proud of them.
Any other stuff, please? Thank you. So that brings us to board reports. Anyone have anything? I have two very good things. One is just, it's that time of year again where they, there's like a ramp up to the physical resolutions, the New York State School Board Association resolutions, which guide us to what they're going to focus on. And districts can put up resolutions and it gets floated on the October meeting, but they're due over the summer. And there were three areas, we were talking regionally about things that could be interesting to put up that I think relate to us. And so I can work on them with some of the districts and just see if anything comes about. I'm not going to go into detail, I just want to mention the three categories. And if anybody has any thoughts, questions, if you do want to or don't want to, let me know. One is electric buses, because we're going to be facing. One is electric buses, because we're going to be facing, you know, a series of sort of logistical and monetary issues as we, as we march down the electric bus path. So any help that we can get on that front from the state level, that was one idea. Another is more flexibility on reserves and on the ability to carry over 14% on the fund balance and then reserves for things like OPEC then for, you know, just to give us more flexibility to plan. And then the third was cybersecurity and just getting, again, any resources to just, you know, help us as a local district, you know, bolster cybersecurity. So those are the three areas that I thought were relevant to us. Some of the others are irrelevant to us. And that's all I got, other than a sincere thank you to our district administrative team and to the rest of the board for an amazing year. And really appreciate everybody working together and we got through it.
Can I make a comment? Seeing that this is our last meeting, I want to thank you, Scott, for being the steady hand at the helm of our ship. I believe this is your fourth term as president in over seven years on the board. Is that right?
Third.
That third. I have to imagine that this was a, one of the more difficult years and you managed to navigate us through all sorts of different waters and as evidenced by what we heard tonight, it was a very successful year. So kudos to you. I'm sure I speak on behalf of everyone that we couldn't be more lucky that, you know, you were in the presidency this year, especially in your dedication to, thoughtfulness to our students really is incredible. So thank you all.
I appreciate it. I appreciate working with you as vice president and all that you did to help along the way because there were many, many times when I reached out with, to get advice and to run things by you. So I much appreciate it. And to everybody here who's ever been out, we just have a great team. We all know how to work together really well for the good of the district and for the students. So.
Thank you, Ron. I think this was a rough year for some of us. But, you know, it was great working with you and Jason on the election. Scott and you for your support and advice through that process that was valuable to you. Thank you for both for leading us.
Here, here.
I think that brings us close to the end. So communications to the board, there was one regarding reading curriculum. Any other communications? Nope. Then I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes from June 7.
Second.